Sometimes it's another work that the other kids don't know as well, so then they can share their thoughts. And if you guys can kind of learn as a group. It's a more focused instruction for their needs and I can help them a little bit easier because I can see what they're actually needing help with at that time. And it's only a small group, so I only have to focus on about four or five kids at a time and really drive instruction for their needs.
This set card, like the other teachers at Kingsley City School District, uses our district design core investigations materials. The literacy page provides a perfect home for these materials. Teachers have easy access to this page from both school and home. Additionally, having the resources housed in the page makes them fluid, so that we can use teacher and student data feedback to make changes to the document.
It's a foundational film for everything else that is needed for reading. They're going to be better and better as they continue to practice. It's going to help us in every other subject that we teach in school.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. So we didn't get the introduction that we usually get from Mrs. Heidecker. She was called away, but obviously that was our weekly, our bi-weekly film this week was featuring our guide to reading program. Next we have Mrs. Anderson, our principal at Crosby Schools, who's going to talk to us about the Crosby School and the local assistance plan. There it is.
So, thank you for having me here tonight. The agenda for the meeting appears like I'm presenting on Crosby School and I would be happy to just do a general overview of how good we have had the beginning of this school year. We had some really exciting things. We had the stadium museum two weeks ago. There was a partnership with Miller and Crosby. All students K through five, K through six, attended the expo with a hands-on science technology event. And the students enjoyed it. We have a lot of good observations about that. And the partnership with Miller just kind of helped us to address that continuum from elementary to middle school. So that was great. We have our Battle of the Books underway, so the month of November is all about reading. And the competition that will be held in the beginning of December, which you will be invited to join. But tonight, I have been asked to address a very specific topic called the Local Assistance Plan. So Crosby School was cited for one of our subgroups for not making adequate yearly progress on state assessment for the 2013-14 school year. So what I'd like to do is take you through why we were cited, what we have to do because we were cited, and where we move from here. So the slides pretty much are a general overview, but hopefully can give you enough information. And then if you have questions, I'll be happy to address them. We worked with Barbara Tischler-Hastig, who is here. And she is an foster post's employee who was brought in to consult on this topic and to help address some of our, the issues of special education at Crosby School. She is a special education student information specialist, system specialist. And she will be working with school for the next two years. Okay, Bill. You're on. So this is about accountability. And you probably are aware that when it comes to accountability, we are measured on two things: participation and performance. This Crosby has been cited not on participation, but on the performance for this particular school year. The criteria that put us in a lab designation, a school whose largest gap on any accountability measure, and ELA is the accountability measure here, between the subgroup and the non-subgroup students within a measure is 100 or more points for, and it looks like an error of the 2012-2013 school year, but the performance index is compared from the year before to the year that you're cited. So that is where that number comes from. We have subgroups and groups in which we're accountable for. These are all of the students in county or possibly group. The checkmarks indicate those groups that we are accountable for. In order to be accountable, you have to have 30 or more students in the subgroup. Students with disabilities is highlighted in red because that is the group of which we received that designation. So what does special education at Crosby School look like? We have an integrated consultant teacher model. The CT is consultant teacher. We have one class on every grade level K through four, a total of 27 students in the current year. We have four self-contained classes. Two are combined, K and one are combined, in an 8-1-2. That is a full class of eight. And grades one and two is a class of a full class of 12. In grades three and four, technically it's a 3-4 program, but because the number is high, we, I chose to separate into grade three and grade four. And those numbers are 11 and 9. It is really important to note that Crosby School educates students with disabilities from every town, well, not every, but several towns and zones in the district. And that's an important piece of information as we look at the 2013-14 school year. So the enrollment at Crosby, I wrapped out from the 2012-13 school year to the 2015-16, the current school year. 13-14 is an important year. It's the year that we were cited. It is also the year in which we merged, C and Crosby. And it is the year that we picked up close to 100 students in general, but over 40 students that are classified. And that you can see the yellow bar indicates we went from 64 students that are classified in 13 to over 105. The blue box is the number of self-contained students. And you can see in the 2012 school year, we had 13, excuse me, 16 students. And we, that number doubled actually in the 2013 school year. Just looking at students with disabilities, our total number, you can see clearly now that went from 64 to 105 in the, in the 2013-14 school year. The yellow bar this time indicates the number of students that are taking near and state tests. That's an important detail because that is the reason that we're cited. So that number was significant for that year, making that subgroup really, the scores in that particular subgroup had an impact on our overall scores. And the percent of students with disabilities, this is worth noting, that although we went in the first year of the merger to a student, a percentage of students with disabilities at close to 27%, we are now down to under 25% in the current school year. So there are, there's a lot of good things that have happened between the 2013-14 year that we were cited and today. So that's, and that is what's reflected in the Local Assistance Plan. When we started this process, there were a lot of mixed emotions, from starting with the principal filtering down to the teachers that are in these classrooms, working really hard with these students every day. And they started with a lack of understanding, why did it happen? It went to fear, like what does this mean for Crosby School and the district? A lack of confidence in terms of what we are doing and how does that, how does it matter if we're cited? Surprised, I knew we didn't make AYP in that group. I wasn't, I didn't understand that we would be doing yet another accountability plan. Disappointed, when you work hard, you want to know that your efforts are recognized. We reached a point where we knew that we had to learn and we agreed that we had to get started. So that started the process. What did we actually do? You have the Local Assistance Plan, your Nerd packets, I believe. It looks like this. 27 pages. And we had to do a self-review of that plan. So first, we had to identify a Crosby team with special educators. There were two consultant teachers, three self-contained teachers, and one regular teacher that served on the team. Data collection was done with Barbara and Beth, Jackson will also help us with the plan. Beth is here, thank you, Beth. And that information helped to develop the quality improvement plan. Do you want to just make a comment about the quality improvement plan?
Sure. The classroom visits that we did are using the Regional Technical Assistance Walkthrough Tool, which is used as evidence-based practice in looking at classroom climate, looking at culture, looking at instructional strategies, explicit direct instruction, special design instruction. We're really going through the special education classrooms and really doing a comprehensive view of those aspects of the school climate we did. So we went through the consultant teacher classrooms and we went through self-contained classrooms. And so between Beth and I, we did 18 classroom visits. And through the process, I've met with the team, we've been reading with Beth. And we really, I talked with them about this process of school improvement. We talked about it as a continual process, that it was something where it was an opportunity to focus on how do we grow? And how do we look at what the overall needs are? And coming up with a student outcome goal, instructional practice goal, and looking at the system goal. So looking at those remaining pieces to help drive what we're doing and tying it into the local assistance plan.
But that plan actually is submitted to the state, correct?
Yes.
Once we completed the quality improvement plan, we began the self-review. We used the diagnostic tool for school and district effectiveness. That tool has been used with every plan that we have used in the district. So our resources were the Crosby set plan, the district comprehensive improvement plan, and the school initiatives and the district initiatives that have been put in place in the past year and a half that have made an impact on where we stand at this point in time. Just a quick review, the diagnostic tool has six tenets. The first tenet is district leadership. We did not review district leadership. We did however, address the remaining five tenets: school leader practices and decisions, curriculum development, teacher practices, students' social, emotional development, mental health, and family and community engagement. And as you look at the plan, you'll see that each of those tenets have statements of practice that have to be evaluated in terms of where we stand. The steps that came out of the review process. We recognize that our special education classroom instruction must align to the Common Core learning standards. In the cases of our self-contained classes, this is a real challenge. Many of those students are not functioning at grade level. That's why they're in those classes, they have special needs. And so that's, that's an area that Barbara will be working on, teachers, to make sure that those standards are being addressed, that when they are evaluated on a state test, that they have a level of readiness that they can approach proficiency or better. Differentiated instruction is an area that we need to address in all classrooms all the time, using data to monitor student progress. And then professional learning is a big part of this. The professional learning will include a book study, explicit direct instruction, Barbara already mentioned that. That the special educators will become a professional learning community and they will meet monthly with Barbara, myself, and probably Beth will be pulled into it so that we can just ongoing professional development in that area. We will use data from the classrooms, peer coaching, and sharing of best practices. And the entire Crosby staff will be brought into that work through faculty meetings and other professional development opportunities that we have. Our work does not end with a plan. So our commitment is to invest in our teachers, to provide time to reflect and collaborate, to create systemic changes in professional practice. This is included because the, many of our students at Crosby and the special classes in particular do not start at Crosby School. They start in their home district. They are, they may end up in Crosby School because those programs, the special programs that they're in, are not in the schools that they, in their regular tenant zone. So it really is important that we as a district know that what's happening in kindergarten at Chambers in a special class, where those children are going to end up at Crosby in second grade, is continuous. So our practice really needs to extend beyond the doors of Crosby School. Obviously, we need to monitor progress and then we have to support the plans that are already in place that will help to address students with disabilities. So by the end of the process, we felt a little bit differently. We felt informed and reassured that what the work that we have been doing has been good work, worthwhile work, and we will see the fruits of our labor. We were proud of the accomplishments that have been made and that we're ready to work. And this is my finale. The reason we're doing this? That is what we are here to do. That ends my presentation, but I'd be happy to answer questions if there are.
Anyone?
Are you looking?
We usually start where the questions begin.
Can I have a question? My colleagues have questions they should ask.
Dr. Japan.
Go ahead, I'll go first. So I have, well, I have a few questions, but one is, I'm noticing on this, this map plan is what you're using to go forward for this year. For the next year. Right, and even though there's kind of a lag in where the data are coming from.
Lag in the sense of where the accountability is cited, right.
There is, there is. And so I saw that this plan has, are there ratings on the side of this effective? Where are those ones at?
That was the self-review that 18, the ETSB self-review. So what we did is we looked at each of the tenets in the statement practice. And we evaluated where we are now in terms of that particular statement of practice. And the process was a healthy process in terms of where a lot of voices at the table. And there were a lot of discussions about what the rating should be. But at the end of the day, if the evidence could be cited that supported that particular statement of practice, that determined the choice in the highly effective, effective developing or ineffective. I do have some supplemental, some additional evidence that there really didn't, there wasn't room for in the plan, that I will look with Ms. Anderson, we can share that with you. That might help to answer some of those questions.
I just also want to clarify, the lack of a year-by-year designation through the state. So year-by-year districts will get cited, considering the three criterias. The quality improvement plan is a two-year plan to really help with the sustainability of whatever professional development work of the year over the year. So the purpose of ours is to really just help people with their challenges, so it's not just year-on-year.
Well, I just was noting when I looked at that there were only two ratings below effective or ineffective, which I guess makes a little more sense now that I know that you've made some progress since then. And it's probably a little harder to rate. And it was just interesting to note that the one was community engagement and the other was about the implementation of Common Core learning standards. So it seemed as though that was, and you touched on that as well, but it was just a interesting, and I was confused about how, I was happy to see so many effective and highly effective ratings.
Well, I have to, you know, we had several teachers on the team. And we don't have that here, but Bill was on the team and Kate was on the team. And the teachers actually were really good at identifying things that were happening in the classrooms and in terms of the parent-teacher connection that was being made that a lot of administrators weren't really aware of. So their input was valuable and it was also important to make sure that it was noted that they were doing things and had the evidence of doing things that administrators may not necessarily have.
I'll just piggyback on that briefly because I too noted that there were two developing, it's like when your child brings home a report card, we tend to zero in on what can be improved and not giving the attaboys, which I will be glad to give you, Ms. Anderson and everybody who worked on this. But I was happy to note the communication piece, you know, something that we're constantly stressing and working on and trying to get that home involvement. And it's tough, but that also with what Mr. Perna had sent us, the Crosby Times was a nice piece as well. So it seems like you're making some headway as far as that goes. And also just the comment that self-reflection for all of us is important. Nobody wants to be in this position, but you know, I think the fact that you've embraced it is good.
I probably, if I was doing the self-reflection on my own, we wouldn't be developing in all areas. But the fact that there were a team of people that could say, no, we do that, or no, we have this in place. And the thing that I really am proud of is, there was a time, particularly in that 2013-14 school year, when I had third and fourth graders arrive at Crosby School for the first time. How much we had been in two or three different schools before their arrival. So now, I'm proud to say, we have a continuum. If my kids are there in kindergarten, they stay right through to the end of fourth grade. There's no one leaving. Now, we do sometimes pick up a few depending on programs district-wide, but that has been a critical piece. They are part of our community. It doesn't matter what their address is, they're part of our community, they know it, and, and we take care of them. And they participate in everything that everyone else does. There's, they have a very inclusive approach. And that to me is going to pay off down the road.
I was going to ask Ms. Anderson about, you mentioned about the flow of Chambers School students jumping to Crosby. Is that a big challenge when you have a number of students?
Mr. LaForsen is probably going to have to address this because I don't, I'm not up to speed on what every school has. But I do believe that all of the elementaries have a K-1 program, an 8-1-2 program, K-1. But not all schools continue with a 1-2, or a 2-3, or a 3-4. So if they exit the 1-2 program, they need a path they need to go to. Is that accurate, Mr. LaForsen?
Yes, that's accurate. If in the elementary school, the program is not offered, that continuum is not there, and we have meetings and we have students attending programs, and it could be at Crosby Elementary School because that's where we have that classroom.
So that's an important insight then, actually, that you've provided. And the continuity is just so stark and how important that is across our district. You see it so sharply with your experience and I think that's an important effect for the entire district. But I also wanted to ask kind of along that reflection theme, I know this was targeted at your students with special needs, but I'm wondering what you come away with, the thought for students in the school as a whole?
I think we come away with the practices that are implemented or need to be implemented in special education classrooms need to be implemented in all classrooms. There are struggling learners in every classroom and learners that need differentiation and need very targeted instruction for their needs. And the fact that we as a district implemented the September assessments associated with the next step divided reading, which was kind of your intro tonight, really provided a lot of good baseline information about students as learners, where they are, and, and what teachers need to do in order to address their needs. So the, it really applies in all classrooms. And I'm anxious for that step when some of my regular education teachers can begin to really learn some of the strategies that special educators need to do in order to meet the needs of their students. Not every child is a visual learner or an audio learner. They have, those models have to be built into that most classrooms, most of the time.
Thanks, Ms. Jancy.
First, I'd like to compliment you on your presentation. I thought it was, I think, very effective. Thought that came to mind as some of the other questions were being asked. And you talked about reaching back to other schools for students who are going to be coming into Crosby. What about looking forward when students, you know, some of the students who were there in 13-14 or 12-13, 13-14 have now moved out of Crosby? What is the collaboration for those students going forward?
Well, I think that that is definitely something that should be looked at, particularly for those students. Many of them that are leaving fourth grade are probably performing at a second or third grade level. And in the middle school environment, they're not necessarily doing the kind of reading instruction that really they, some of them still need. Some of them need continual practice and just basic skills, letters and sounds and, and footwork, things of that sort. So that certainly is worthy of exploring how we can bridge that from the middle to the, or from the elementary to the middle.
Any other question?
Ms. Anderson, one of the things that I was thinking about during this was looking at the data and looking at the performance at Crosby. This designation is based on the gap between the subgroup and all other, and other subgroups. So as we look at the Crosby data, we see your, your scores, your achievement increasing outside of this subgroup. So just, it's really not a question, I guess, it's just a clarifying point. That makes your work doubly hard for the, for our students with disabilities because as our, as the cohort goes away from them, we're trying to close, there's already a 100-point gap. We're trying to close that 100-point gap and that 100-point gap is growing because our students, because we have seen increased student, you know, improved student achievement at Crosby. So again, I don't know, I'm saying slow down the student achievement of the other subgroups, but that's just kind of pointing out that that's, this is, this is something that we need to, you know, jump on now. Very, and you know, be very cognizant of how we do our work. And I'm pleased to see that we have our assistance from our foster post's and here to support us.
Actually, that is the, we had a 30-point increase in our performance index in that 2013. 20, in that 13-14 school year. So that, that was a significant jump, but, which helped, which, in a sense, hurt us because it just improved you down. So we had more students scoring low, and more students scoring high, and mathematically, it just didn't work in our favor.
Ms. Johnson?
Do we get any financial support from the state for this designation, dealing with it?
You know, as far as lap, no. We get assistance from our friends at OCSs.
And it's actually a regional technical assistance center, so the regional technical assistance center provides support, so we actually go through some of those supports and provide to the special classes.
Thank you.
Well, we certainly appreciate Mrs. Anderson's presentation, and she certainly deserves. This brings us to the point where the public can participate. Again, it's a two-minute timeframe that you have, I don't know if anyone signed up, and our clerk will let you know how your time is running. Is there anyone that want to?
Just really quick, and I won't, I'll use my teacher voice. I had come every year for the last three years and offered an invitation, and I'd like to do that again today. I was very excited at the last meeting here that the board was coming out to schools, and then you have some days that are designated to come in. I think I missed your visit, you were.
Yes, I was, yes.
And I was being observed at one time.
Yes.
So I appreciate you not interrupting that, because there's a lot going on that day. But I would really like to, we have the team one, and that's Mrs. Taylor, Mrs. Rito, and myself, and also 21 kids who would just love to show you what's going on, invite you into our creative class. In order to really get an idea of what schools are like, you really have to get in and sit down with the board and talk to the kids, so we don't forget to see you, if that's what I came to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else want to add some questions? Can I have a motion to approve the minutes of October 7?
She moved.
It's been moved in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Eyes have it, approved. At this time, we have our superintendent's report.
Well, in breaking from the practice of the last few meetings, we'll have a relatively short superintendent's report this, this, this week, and so I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Scott Kruse, who's our external auditor, and he will be presenting for board our annual audit.
Thank you. Before I begin, I just want to go over a couple of things. I want to thank District Office for their cooperation courtesy sent to us throughout the audit. The process of the audit is getting longer and longer. We actually start this process in March with our letter, planning letters, and our data letter, look at your district throughout the year, it's not just, we come here for a month or two, but we watch how your district's doing, we check your minutes, we look at your stating, and we actually talk through the district office throughout the year. If there's questions or concerns that come up, we're always there, available for, for this. So what happens, if something happens, we're able to help you out before, you know, not showing up at June 30th and it's already too late. So throughout the whole year, you know, anytime we need information, or we come for our business, we always have everything we need. Like I said, there's more and more data, and you see the report gets, it's getting bigger and bigger, I mean, years back, you're 20 pages out, 70 pages on. So as the requirements become, you know, more requirements, more disclosure, we have to get more data from the district office, and throughout, like I said, throughout, anytime we need it, it's, you know, they're always there for us. Financial statement, it is to the districts, it's not ours, you know, we go through and help them out with it, they do a good job with it. We actually have a whole document, there's only four, six pages that are ours, opinions, so looking at that. It is summary, so you didn't have to flip through it, but looking at your financial, you got unqualified opinion, which is what you're looking for, I mean, you're prepared to financial is based on standards that are out there. There were new standards, yeah, the 68, so it might look a little bit different than in the past, but that was just putting on. The teacher retirement system and employees retirement system, which used to be back in the notes, now is on page one, which shows district-wide. A couple of years ago, we had COPEB, which put on post-employment, post-employment retirement benefits, so there was, that was the new thing to it, and added about four pages to the notes. Looking at another item, we got no material weaknesses, no significant deficiencies. And your extra-class report was unqualified, too, is what you're looking for. Last week, I met with the audit committee, and, and we went through the whole financial statement, went through the extra-class report, and it was, it was a good discussion, going through all of the numbers and any, you know, comments and everything. Looking at your financials, I think I said I have a summary here, your assets increased from 50 million to 54 million, your liabilities actually went down from 28.5 to 25.9, and your overall fund equity went from 21.8 to 28.4. So we like to see that. We look at, you see you have, you still have your reserves, you have unassigned fund balance, which is your 4%, which is the state, the, your state limit, you also still put money towards taxes. So we like to see the balance, like I've always said in the past, that you have reserves for things that are anticipated or aren't, sometimes things happen throughout the year, and this is why you have these reserves to cover things that aren't planned. Looking at the list of reserves, you still have you maintain employee retirement contribution reserve, capital reserve, property loss reserve, unemployment insurance reserve, liability reserve, and a tax return reserve. And you were able to increase that. You were able to increase those from, from your prior year, as you could see. And like you said, we like to see that, because things happen throughout, throughout years, this way it helps you, helps you control those. If you look at the next page, how you ended up with that positive, you ended up, is that your revenues came over, your expenditures by 6.7 million dollars. Looking at your revenue, revenues compared to your budget, you obtained over $4 million more than what you would've budgeted, which is excellent. Anytime you're able to obtain more than what you would've budgeted in these conditions is excellent. A lot of them were, a lot of one-time things, which aren't gonna happen over time, so, you know, you had refunds from prior years, that every year is different, you have refunds from OCSs, pilot payments were more than anticipated, interest and penalties from your taxes that were collected by the county and the city, and your state sources were more. So looking at that side, you have a positive there, looking at your expenditures, you were, you were able to control your expenses, looking at, you know, major areas of savings for employee benefits, you're teaching Regner, and teaching special education. So with those two positive items, you were able to put more in your reserves and, and still have a healthy fund balance, if you like to see. Another positive is that your school lunch program, which had an operating of $121,000, $122,000, and that, and it didn't have a transfer from general fund, which you had to have in the past of $150,000 a year. That's excellent, where your program is able to sustain on its own. Most of the programs out there now cannot sustain themselves. And you don't even have to do a transfer, a lot of them, and the transfers from general fund, your program now is, is, is holding its own, you know, from a couple of years back, where you had a Poly Food Group in here, and now back, you had in-house, that's excellent that you're, you know, you're not, you're able to maintain your own, especially with the tougher regulations, portion control, you know, portion size, and what you can serve, it makes it more difficult to turn a profit. Like I said, we like to see that the district has reserves and fund balance, we commend the board and district office for looking and planning for the future. Because it's still gonna be tough out there, looking at the property, with a 2% private tax gap, the CPI is, right now, projected to be at 0%, which means you're really not gonna have much, any, any increasing in taxes. Stating has been going up, but you're still at levels that are three, four years, you're about like 2011. So even though you hear, oh, you're getting more rate, you're still not where you were years back. So the only positive is that your teachers' retirement and your employees' retirement rates have gone down. So you went like from 17% to a little over 13% for teachers' time, which is, which is good for the district, but it's still a large, it's still a large mandated number that you have to pay every year. So, like I said, looking at the positives, kind of said that it's still gonna be tough out there, like you said, if you have, can't increase your taxes due to CPI, it's gonna be tough. But luckily, your district has been planning, you have, like I said, you have the reserves and you have fund balance to cover that. Any questions?
Ms. Johnson?
I would just like to make a comment, I'd like to thank Mr. Kruse for the presentation he made to the Audit and Finance Committee last week, and also here to the board tonight. I think it's, and this is the second year that we've had a, a presentation that's, that he's prepared outside of the formal documents to aid us in understanding what's happened, and what's, what has happened, though, without having to go through, flip through the documents. So I thank you for that.
Thank you, Mr. Kruse. Thank you for your presentation, and we certainly thank our administrative people who take care of this.
Yeah.
Doing a great job, and that's what's reflected here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Consent agenda, do we have any that we want to pull? Now, can I have a motion to?
I'd like to, B-58.
B-58?
Can I pull P-71, please?
Any others?
I'd like to pull CS-15.
Can I have a motion then to, to adopt the consent agenda with the exception of B-58, P-71, and CS-15?
Second.
They're moved in second to adopt the consent agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. I have a motion to bring back B-58.
So moved.
Second.
Question?
I pulled this because I wanted just to explain to the board that this was present, this is the acceptance of the RFP for the fixed asset and inventory and appraisal services. This was discussed at Audit and Finance Committee meeting on, last Tuesday, a week ago, and Mr. Olson explained that there were two, two RFPs of three?
Three, we, and then three of the other.
Okay, there were, so there were three RFPs, two of them were, two of them resulted in interviews, one of them was for the, one of them was with the firm that we already use, and the other one was from Questar III, and the, the business department felt that the Questar III proposal was, was, was much stronger, and I think less expensive also, is that right?
About the same.
About the same. So anyway, that's, and Mr. Michael and I, who were in attendance at the Audit and Finance meeting, recommend, agreed with their recommendation on this, so I would ask you to support it.
Any other comments concerning B-58? I have a, all in favor of B-58? Can you say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion carries. Can I have a motion for P-71?
I'll move it, since I hold it.
Second.
Second. Any questions on that?
I was just curious of clarification for the JW Bailey Middle School 3-5 OSS?
It's a, I'm sorry, it's 3 to 5 PM out-of-school suspension, that's our tutoring center, so students who are, if the student is suspended out of school from 3 PM to 5 PM, we have our tutoring center open for students, those students who are out of school suspended to come back and get their, and get work with teachers.
Okay, thank you for clarifying, because I thought OSS meant out-of-school suspension, and I was like.
Yeah, they're out of school during the regular school day, but they're, and they come back from 3 to 5.
Right, opportunity for them to come in, and, okay, thank you for that clarification.
Any other questions on P-71? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Can I have a motion for CS-15?
So moved.
Okay. Any questions?
Yes, I was just wondering with the abolishing of these positions, how would that affect the food service department?
This was recommended to us by, by, at our food service department, he, he's very efficient, as we found out with our audit report, you know, he's measured what he needs in each of the kitchens, these are positions that, that he feels that they don't need to fill, so he's asked that we move forward and abolish them. Mr. Olson, anything else to add on that?
All in favor?
Aye.
CS-15, any opposed? The motion carries. And it brings us to, yes, Ms. Johnson?
We have two donations in the, in the consent agenda. $159 to the Meyer, from the Meyer PTA, to Meyer School, and then $5,000 from the Toyota Match Program, and that went to Bailey Middle School Orchestra Program. Does the Miller Middle School, does the orchestra, Miller Middle School benefit from this as well, or is it just Bailey Orchestra there?
The, the donation requested that it be for Bailey Middle School for the Strings Program to buy cellos. We generally honor the request. So I'd like to thank those.
For 36 to the number for Phil.
Certainly, we always, it's always good to see the community supporting the things that's going on in the schools, and we are grateful for their contributions. At this point, we're at the more.
Can I have a suggestion on just a protocol on the present, on, on donations? Can we have those as a separate consent item, so that we don't have, so we don't overlook them? Rather than pulling them from the regular consent agenda, they'll be separated out so they're considered together? Is that?
I'll speak with Mariah, she does the, you know.
Okay.
Okay, this brings us to the Board of Education, coffee and conversation. Is that yours?
It's not me, but, but I'll speak on it. We had coffee and conversation, a very good turnout, I thought, at the Riverview Baptist Church on Wednesday night, and there were four board members there and the superintendent. That went very well, and anybody else wanna?
It was, it was a nice evening, we thought we had a good conversation, it was really helpful to have Dr. Catalino there, the people at the Riverview were very, very welcoming, and some good ideas were raised, for our trials, I know you made note of a couple of them as well, we keep bringing it back to board committees and see if we can continue the dialogue.
I'm just curious if you could give us a little more detail, what were the kinds of things that you talked about, and what were some of those good ideas?
Actually, it'd be the broad, you know, there's a broad range of topics for our conversation, we talked about, you know, we talked about suspension, we talked about Common Core, we talked about status assessments, we talked about opting out, so we had So, we had, we had, it was a lively conversation. We also put, one of the things that I walked away with most importantly, and I brought it to my, to my cabinet this week, was meeting with some of the people who provide after school tutoring, you know, outside of the school, they can just do it through other organizations to our, to our students who come to them after school. And our, I think it's, it's an untapped resource for us. One of those things that we kind of just overlooked. And what they, the request to me was really about, can, can they take part in our professional development? Can we send people there to help them? Because they want to help the students, but maybe they're not up to date with the, with the, with the curriculum right now and those kind of things. So, we're already starting that ball rolling to work together with those groups. We have a group of the Boys and Girls Club. We have a group at the Hive Center. So, I thought that was, that was a, you know, one really important thing that I walked away from. But, yeah, I think we had a lot of conversations. I think we were able to answer a lot of questions. It was, it was nice. It was nice to have, you know, a, a group of people that, and it was raining, like, you probably remember last week. So, people came out in the rain to me and it was, and actually Reverend Costin was there as well. So, it was very.
Yeah, I just wanted to say I want to congratulate you on where you presented the information and you took the time to attend it. If you're in Russia, as far as I was concerned, and the people that I spoke to after, appreciated you being there. Appreciated everybody being there, but they certainly, I appreciated the way you presented the information. I just barged in. I was for the.
Glad to have you there.
Anyone else on that? I really think that it was a good effort to try to find out, because a lot of times we're doing it early in the day and many people work and therefore they're not able to come to the coffee and conversation. So, I think we saw that people will come out, and I think we'll even get a greater number as we do that. They will come out at that 6:00, 6:30 timeframe. And it was, I thought, very informative. People walked away feeling that, that the superintendent and the board is listening and are willing. And I think that once we go back to them and say, hey, yeah, you can come and we will help you to be able to better tutor the kids and to assist, and we'll do some of that. I, I think it'll have a real positive impact upon the community. The next coffee and conversation will be at the Uptown Coffee, 288 Wall Street. And that's on Monday, November the 16th. Do we have people signed off for that?
Kathy? Kathy?
Anyone else want to join them? I'm sure they won't mind.
When is it again?
It's November the 16th, Monday, the 16th, 8:30 to 9:30.
And that's the new name for Hudson Coffee Trader?
Yes.
In case anyone doesn't know where they're, where they would be going.
Okay. I know Nora had on here for the board retreat. Did we get a date for that? I know we were.
We did not yet get a date. I think Camille had reached out to NISBA, but we haven't heard back from them yet.
Well, she asked us to give them some dates. And my, my thought on that was to consult with you to see if the opposite Wednesdays would be, there's two Wednesdays in January that, if that is feasible to the board, then I would suggest those two dates to her, because she said she was open.
Are you saying the same, Mrs. Sherry Keller?
Yeah, the same facilitator as well. That was my.
Mrs. Keller?
I mean, I think that's, if that's what the board would like, if we're going to go through NISBA, they probably would want to be consistent.
Yeah, I would like to say that Mrs. Keller was an excellent presenter, and I would recommend her to see her back.
Back to you, Curtis.
Yeah, so, we got, we got in our packet.
The board self-evaluation.
I have a, I have a, BOSI's board meeting on Wednesday, the 27th.
The 27th. Okay, so that'll zoom that date out. What's the other?
14.
14?
The 13th.
Yes, the 13th.
So, is that agreeable to the rest of the board? Is that, I'll shoot to that date?
I can do that.
13?
Good?
Okay, back to you, Curtis.
So, were we supposed to fill out this, you gave us the board self-evaluation?
Yes, she was like, it was the same one that.
It's the same one.
But she's going to craft something different for us in January, like this?
I was told to send that one out by Nora.
Okay.
So that we could, I mean, time-wise, things change as you go along. So, I, I was not told that there would be a new.
A new.
A new evaluation tool.
No, even if there's no, right, but she had a very structured presentation where we talked about some concrete things, and I'm hoping that those, like, we did those concrete things already, so that even, that we'll be moving on to something else.
Right. And I think that is the plan, but they did want those evaluations back again.
So, we'll settle on November the 13th for the board retreat. I mean, January.
If they're available.
That would work well. January 13th. We went to the NISBA conference, and so those who have attended, would you like to share with us some things that you may have gained as a result of the conference that may benefit our district?
I had a chance to attend this, the NISBA's annual convention about the school law. And I can say that last year I attended a workshop about bullying among our students. And we all know the importance of the, creating a district-wide environment free of bullying. And this is the year's convention, though. Bullying issue about, in the workplace was a hot topic. There is a proposed legislation now in Albany that will definitely be passed, and the consequences for bullying in the workplace will be very dire. The most interesting thing about the new law is that the new individual will be liable to, not only the district. The law allows the courts to impose penalties on the employee, including loss of employment, punitive damages, and attorney's fee included. And as far as the privilege to the teachers, the 38A procedures are thrown out of the window. And I'm suggesting to the superintendent and the administration to create a workshop or some kind of a training, that all teachers and employees will be going through some kind of a training before we avoid any future problems. I also had, attended a couple of other workshops on the conference about teenage suicide, reducing the suspension, and the impact of the social justice in public education. And my final thoughts about these workshops was that we had all heard the old African proverb, it takes a village to raise a child. Well, in America today, in our society, it takes a village to educate and raise a child to his potential. We must, we must as a community give this child not only the means to learn, the ABCs and the three Rs, but also needs our social and emotional stability, including inclusion of justice and fairness.
Thank you.
I also had the opportunity to attend, and I'm thankful for it. It's always a very rewarding experience, not only to be with our colleagues. The session's always good, but also to talk with people in other districts. Sometimes it's just comforting to know that you're not in alone. Some of the issues that we're facing are similar. Last time I had my bullet points, and this time I left it home. But we tried to split up, I think, which was good. There were so many sessions that we really didn't want to, you know, double up as far as representing Kingston. I did, however, go with Mr. Michael and Ms. Lauter, one that was really well done, which was on teenage bullying and suicide. It was really poignant, but it was very well done. And very scary in terms of social media. I think we know the challenges that we're up against, but especially in Policy Committee, we're talking about, you know, what, which our students are allowed and not allowed to do, and liability, you know, parents, if you pay for a data plan. It was shocking for me, naively, to believe that I could be liable for what my kids are doing on that phone. And it's just totally different than when we were coming up. That session was, was important. We did attend something as well on trying to decrease suspensions, which Reverend Childs and I, once again, through policy, something that we've been working on. I think one of the most energizing sessions that I went to was with the new commissioner who was there, Mary Ellen DeLea. And she was very receptive. It was kind of different, a shift from our previous chancellor, dare I say. The room was packed. She talked about the fact that she's a former teacher, former administrator, I believe. She said she has 45 years in the business, which was hard to believe. I said this at our coffee and conversation. If I'm repeating myself, I, I apologize. But she heard from a lot of board members there who are also parents or also teachers, who are many stakeholders. There was a student there who she really said, no, I want to hear from the student. So, that was refreshing. And she did say, she heard a concern about testing, high-stakes testing. And she did say that the agreement would be that they're going to decrease the test time. We could not get her to commit as far as how much that time would be decreased, but that was heartening. And also, she seemed very receptive to hear from stakeholders throughout the state as far as asking for input. And I was trying to look quickly on our website. I believe we had a link on there. But there is a way for you to, anybody who wants to get information, to our State Education Commissioner to do so. So, I would encourage you to do that. And that, for me, was really the most rewarding or interesting session. But thanks for the opportunity to the district.
I, I attended also, and I have to say, I thought it was one of the better conferences that I've been to that NISBA has put on. So, I was, you actually both have covered a lot of what I was going to say. I was also at the, at the session with DeLea, and she did talk about a statewide survey that they're sending out where you can respond and give your impressions of Common Core. My understanding is that it's very long and it's very specific, so we'll have to kind of see.
And it is, I'm sorry, it is up on our website. You can, there's a link right on our website.
Right. But so, you know, it's worthwhile. It's worth taking a look at that. And, and I agree that the energy in that room was different from King, who's very reserved and very much, she was a little bit more open and engaging. But we'll see kind of where the feedback goes and how much listening is actually happening. So, another, I went to a session on suspensions and disproportionality, and that was actually very well done also. I thought it was good. And one thing that they talked a lot about is identifying your hot spots. And so, really doing some action research where you are positioned in schools and watching and keeping track of where your hot spots are and where your difficult points are so that you know the times of day, the areas of physical places in the school where you have complications, and then working to, work with your staff and work with your kids to, to identify those and then help do things to mitigate some of the problems that you have. And they also talked a lot about training, about mindset and thinking, thinking other ways to work with kids and that suspensions aren't your first resort. Then I also went to a session that is an association of, of school boards, even though we were at an association of school boards. But, and one thing I learned which surprised me is that we're all mandated reporters. I didn't know that. And so, we should all be trained in mandated reporting. So, I don't know if we, I have not been trained in that. So, that's something we should probably put on our list.
It's an online.
I'm sure you can do it anyway, but we should have access to what, however way we need to do it.
Anyone else?
I also went and had the pleasure of going. It was very interesting and great conferences, great sessions, and I did go with one. The Influence of Teaching on Student Agency by Ronald Ferguson. He was excellent. And I did the Teens, Technology, and Suicide with these. And the rallying, the entire village. We, I tried to get in to see the commissioner, and it was so packed I couldn't get in. And then the next day, I had the pleasure of being a delegate all day. Yes, for the district. But it was, it was interesting.
And actually. Paycheck.
Yeah, no, thanks. That was fine. It was, it was good. A lot of them passed and some of them failed. But we only got the 27 of them.
Is that legal?
I think the, you know, I was able to attend several sessions, and I tried to not go where the board members were so we could split up, but they were everywhere. I would, and I say, you know, I am impressed, and I do want to compliment our board members. There's, there were a lot of distractions in New York City, which is where we work, and our board members were at sessions. So, I was impressed that every, every way I went, there was someone from our board sitting in there. I, I attended several of the same sessions, but I also attended a few sessions that were more, more specific to building projects and, and things like that. So, I was interested in hearing what the newest and latest, and I was able to hear Carl Thurno talk about the, the smart schools money. So, that's something we're working on, putting our plan together. So, it was good. And then, and it brought some information back for Mr. Olson, Mr. Verge, and myself to discuss about how we can expend those, that those money. So, it was, it was good. And I think one of the other things that was mentioned before, sometimes just being able to speak to your colleagues, other board members of the school districts is, is almost as valuable as the workshop. So, it was good to have that opportunity as well.
I let everyone else speak, then I don't have to say much. No. But I had the opportunity. It was really a great experience, again, being at the conference. I think one session I went to that I didn't run into anyone else from our board was one on developing mindsets for academic success. And it was done by David Document, a doctor, Doctor Stockman? Anyway, he's from Harvard. And it was a very interesting presentation. And basically, what it was doing is saying, he says that he was, he teaches people how to fail. This interesting comment. And what he was saying is that a lot of the kids that come to Harvard are used to never failing. But if you're going to be innovative and if you're going to be able to, to move things, you've got to have an opportunity to fail. And he said, then there are other kids who never had complete success all the time, and they've got to learn how to turn the failure into success. And so, he went through a whole theory of, of actions that, that he calls, he basically says, as you develop this mindset for academic success, that you've got to be able to show the kids that failing is not final. It's not something that has to be a dead-end street for you, but that you can move forward. And he had really interesting comments. What I did do is record that, so anyone who would like to hear it, I can forward that to you. And also, the flyers that he passed out, the PowerPoint information that he passed out. It was very interesting, I thought. And he has worked not only with the kids that are coming to Harvard, but he works in the inner city with kids who have failed. And he said that what he does works just as successfully with those who are successful as those who have been failing. And it was interesting. The other thing that came out of, one of the things they were talking about was bullying. And, and they've got a, an app, I guess, that, that you can, that kids can download and use to report to the administration any cases of bullying that they're doing. And they said it, places where they have used it, that it has reduced the amount of bullying because it's so out in the open for them. They, they record it. They send it to administration or whoever, parents do, do it. So, it's an interesting thing. We may want to take a look at that and see how other people are using it. But it was, I think it also was part of one of the other.
Suspension.
Suspension things that we were in, that they were using that as an alert. And I think it's called Anonymous Alert. And it's really just using your smartphones with this app to be able to report and to record incidents of, of bullying. So, it was a very interesting conference, and it was, I, I don't like New York City, though, for the conference. The classes are so small, you, several you try to get into, and you can't get into larger places, you can get more people into them. But it was a good one, and hopefully we'll walk away with something we can utilize. Okay, Audit and Finance Committee.
The Audit and Finance Committee met on Tuesday, October 27th. We had the presentation by the external auditor that was given to the full board moments ago. We have a motion, BOE 35, to accept the claims auditor report for September 2015. There were no exceptions on that report, so I'd like to move that.
Second, go second.
Second.
They're moved in second to accept the claims order to report, BOE 35. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
We also reviewed the fund and appropriation and revenue reports for September 2015, and recommend the acceptance of those reports. And we recommend the acceptance of those reports and BoE 36, treasurer's reports. I'd like to make that motion.
Say second. It moved in second to accept the treasurer's report. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Policy Committee.
Yes. We met, the policy committee met on Friday, October 16th, where we had our discussion. We reviewed several NISBA recommended policies and changes. We didn't act on many of them. We did talk once again about the fingerprinting issue, which we'll be discussing again at our next meeting, which is this coming Friday, November 6th. I have the tentative agenda. I've been looking with Mrs. Bowers, so that will go out this evening. And also what we did was we reviewed the charter for the Teaching and Learning Committee, the revised charter. So I have that on here tonight, that resolution, BoE 37. And I'd like to move that, if I may.
Second on that?
Second.
It moved in second to adopt the Teaching and Learning Charter revision. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Are there any old business? Any new business?
So we have on the agenda the policies, 6215, the property tax exemption for senior citizens. Do we have information on that? Do we have that scheduled?
It was placed in the packet.
Was in the packet? Anyway, so I'd like to move that. I'd like to make a motion to revise, well, I don't know what the motion should be. I guess it's just a discussion because we have to have a, in order to, we need a public hearing before we adopt.
Right.
So, and we did discuss this at Audit and Finance Committee meeting. So right now, we have a senior citizen tax exemption, which is 50% of the assessment we're making for any, any senior citizen who is eligible for star exemption. Is that right? And it's with an income of $20,000 or less. Okay, over 65. And, and we're authorized to have a sliding scale. And we've had incidents recently where people who have gone just a little bit over the $20,000 and they've lost all of their exemption. So they've suddenly, they're hit with a doubling of their school property tax. So we would like to propose introducing a sliding scale, keeping the lower limit at the maximum exemption at $20,000 for $50,000 exemption. And going up, I believe there's seven steps that we proposed. So there were, do you? So we would go up to a, well, there's seven, there would be seven levels, including the $20,000 or $19,999.99 level. And then there are, and these increments are provided by law, where we could go to 45% exemption, 40% exemption, 35% exemption, 30% exemption, 25% exemption, or 20% exemption. And so we, so we also could leave, we also could increase the max, the minimum to $20,000. But in discussion at the Audit and Finance Committee meeting, we felt that we should leave this, leave it at $20,000 for 50% exemption. Introduce the sliding scale up to a 20% exemption at $25,700. And then evaluate that in a year because we really don't know how much impact it will have in terms of shifting the tax burden from senior citizens to other taxpayers. And so, so whenever we have an exemption like this, it's not that nobody pays that amount of money. It's that it's shifted from one group of taxpayers to another group of taxpayers. So I think we have to be careful in when we do that because we're adding, we're adding a tax burden to another group of people. So I guess the motion would be to have a public, to have a public hearing at the, before the next board meeting on adopting a resolution that would implement this new tax schedule, exemption schedule.
Question, would we as a board first have to agree to it and then put it out for a public hearing or no?
Well, I guess we would. That's why I'm not sure how exactly the motion should be. I mean, we would.
You cover this?
The same thing as we did for the veterans. Did we, we didn't agree on that before we had a public hearing, did we? Or is it something?
You handled that a little differently. Because we
Because we weren't
The board agreed to put it on a referendum and listen to the voters. This is a little bit different.
We could do that with this, too.
We could. If we did, it would, it would delay the implementation by another year because we wouldn't have to adopt this. The assessors need this information by March 1st in order to be able to implement it. And it would be for the 2016, 2017 tax bills.
May I add something?
Sure.
This shift in the scaling down of the exemption, we all, the school district, I believe in the county, that we never had the scaling down thing. So it would be, you know, we eventually, every municipality, every town, it has this scaling down exemption. So we just try to follow the rest of the community. And the only thing I also would like to add is that according to our estimates, the shift could be from half a million up to a million dollars. So it's nice to let the committee know that this exemption, we'd like to have the opportunity the committee to have, it's understandable by the rest of the taxpayers. Sorry, Mr. Olson?
Yeah, I guess I would only add that we have some information since the last meeting. It looks like the shift would be a bit less than that.
Okay, that's good.
Probably not exceed what happened.
Not exceed what happened yet?
Yeah, probably not.
Let's go to here.
Somewhat less than the shift in the veterans exemption that we just experienced.
Okay.
I just want to reiterate what I think I heard you say. So the shift from, to the public would be approximately half a million dollars, which is less than what the shift was for the veterans tax exemption, which was around, if I remember, probably 750 or something, 780. Okay, so, so.
So this would be an additional shift from what's already available for senior citizens that we already give to senior citizens. So I guess the motion is that we, that we would adopt this schedule and, and schedule a public hearing on, our plan was November 18th. And then we would adopt it, or not adopt it, at the December 9th meeting.
Is there a second to this?
I think that there's several of us who didn't receive a schedule in our packet. I didn't look on the cloud. But I would not come to voting on something I didn't look at.
Dump a slide, you don't have something else. Maybe you missed it.
It was in
We don't, I think it's necessary for us to have a motion and then vote to have the public hearing and have the resolution on the next agenda for the vote to the board to then vote after hearing from the public. So we, we have public hearings without a previous vote from the board to have a public hearing. So we could have a public hearing at the next, before the next board meeting, maybe at 5:30, and then have the resolution on the board for the board to vote. And then Camille and I will make sure that by tomorrow, we'll get, whoever didn't get it, we'll just resend all the information to the committee. So you'll have between now, so you'll have two weeks to, you know, look at it and actually will Mr. Olson and myself be available for any questions if the board wants to call in or stop in or anything of that nature.
Okay, but this is the schedule that we would present and have a public hearing on.
Okay.
Okay.
Do we need a motion for the public hearing or no?
No, because actually it's law for you to have the public hearing prior to changing that policy.
Any other new things to add? Any, yes.
I would like to make a motion that the board appropriate up to $8,000 to defray the travel and lodging expenses of the faculty chaperones on the Barcelona trip for the International Relations Club.
Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second it, but we're going to talk about
Okay, it's been moved in second.
I second.
Questions?
Discussion.
Questions?
Discussion. Well, I don't know that we were all aware that the, the expenses for the faculty members, as it is now, is borne by the students. So it would be, you know, so there's about $8,000 in expenses. It's probably $400 per student expense that would be, that would go towards the faculty chaperones. And, you know, this is a board authorized trip. We made the motion, we approved the, we approved the trip back sometime this summer. And, you know, I just think it would be appropriate for the district to pay the travel expenses of the faculty members who are going rather than the students.
I had gotten that note, so I wrote a little something. First off, I believe the chaperones should be paying their own way. They're getting the time off from work and enjoying this trip and experience as much as the students. I would have gladly went along as a chaperone and paid my own way. It appears to me that the only, they only had three fundraisers. I think they could have done more with fundraising. They had two in September and one in October, according to the sheet we received. If the students and chaperone couldn't find a way to raise or get the money for the trip, then they shouldn't have applied. They had applied for it. They also wanted to go on a trip with teachers. It didn't come about until after the budget, which Kevin Cahill said it did, we didn't budget for it, but it wasn't even until after the budget was passed before we got that. The band, the football players, the lacrosse players, the cheerleaders, they all seem to have booster clubs or fundraisers when they, they're traveling anywhere. And I think this is a great trip for the students. But I also see they, they could have been handshaking, car washing, they could have been doing a lot of other things. And the teachers will be getting the five days off. I doubt they'll be getting, they won't be getting deducted for their days off. We have to hire subs for all of them. So I disagree with that. I don't think we should give them anything. By now, they've had to pay for the trip. And if they couldn't afford it or didn't want to go, then they shouldn't have agreed to go.
Any other comments?
Can I just ask Mr. Shaughnessy for clarification? So in that figure we were given per student, the chaperones number was rolled into that?
Right. Am I correct in that?
Yes.
That's correct. Yes.
So my question actually is, I know, so we did receive the analysis, but are they asking us for money? Do they need money?
They, I mean, I think that's, they haven't asked for money.
No, this is my initiative.
Yeah. I mean, the advisors have come, they've presented, they have not, they have not requested, you know, money. I've requested information from them at the, at the request of the board, but they, they haven't come forward and they asked us for anything.
I mean, I'm happy to support the trip. And I, and I think that it might even be appropriate for the district to give some money, but it's unclear to me exactly what they need. I understand the analysis, but it's unclear to me that they actually, first of all, that they need that much. And it's unclear to me what exactly they need when they haven't asked us for money.
Someone else?
Yes, me. Yes, I think all of us, we'd be crazy enough to support this opportunity for our students. And, you know, I'm so appreciative of the work that both Ms. Bryant and Mr. Sullivan have done. I know that we've had this discussion. I know there was a change in the trip, so time, I don't know what happened there, but we talked about maybe doing a GoFundMe. But my question is, for example, when the band goes to Florida, you know, I don't think we pay for that. And I know, money's tight for everyone, but I do feel that these students knew what they were up against. I see on the sheet quite a few people are getting some scholarships here. I don't know how that was determined. I'm just really concerned about setting precedent because I really think that all of our students, you know, every club should have that opportunity. And as much as I appreciate what Mr. Shaughnessy wants to do and make that gesture, I'm afraid of giving $8,000 to one group. Then we're setting a precedent. And anybody else could come back to us and say, and I would hate to be charged with being discriminatory in any fashion. I want them to go, I fully support them. Personally, if you asked me on a GoFundMe, I'd be more than happy for myself and my family to give something. And I would have much preferred to have gone that route.
That's my, that's my concern. First of all, they didn't ask us yet, so we don't know if they need it or not. Secondly, I'm very concerned about open Pandora's box. Another group would come later on. If we do for this, how could we deny somebody else in the future because of where they're going? Thirdly, I would hope that the chaperones were agreed to go, that they would have known if they could afford it or not.
You know, I would agree to support them if I knew exactly, had a better sense of exactly what they needed. So I'm reluctant to put a dollar figure, if they have come to us and said, this is how much we need, then that's something I would absolutely consider. But I don't, but I would need to hear that from
Well, I'm just going on the basis of the, of the information we can get. We were told that two weeks ago, Dr. Pedelino talked to, talked to the, to the faculty and they didn't have the money. They had raised all the money except for meals, which they estimated at $60 per day. And there's 24, 28 people going. And so that's 11, over $11,000 in, in those expenses. And the spreadsheet that we got early this week showed a surplus of $3,500 between what, between what they've raised and what they've, and what the expenses are for travel, for airfare and hotel fare. So I don't know if they, I don't know why, I don't know why they're not asking for money, but it certainly seems to me that, that they have a shortfall of over $8,000 if the kids are going to eat for seven days and faculty. So I think there's a need there for it.
When did they, when did, I know we approved this trip, but when did they start? Does anyone know when they decided they were going to go to Barcelona?
Well, I couldn't find, I think it was, was it in July?
Yeah, it was in the school year. They were still in school, so it was May or June.
That's what I thought.
I couldn't find it in I couldn't find it in the minutes. But again, it wasn't, you know, it wasn't the kids that came that, it was, it was an invitation to the Kingston City School District through, through an associate or a friend, an acquaintance of Mrs. Linton, as I recall, who invited Kingston High School to send up to 24 students to this event. So it wasn't the kids that approached us, you know. It wasn't the kids who decided.
They decided to go. It was invited to the move, but if you don't want to do it, we can't go.
But it was the kids who had to fill out a, would they have to do an essay or something?
Well, they had to apply.
Right.
And they were selected on the basis of their.
So if they, if they applied, what, they think it's free? No.
Personally, I would rather, I would be more apt to vote to spend money for children, for the students who needed to go, rather than the chaperones. I mean, the students have much less.
Supplement.
Much less income than the teachers. And I know, I don't think that, I know we don't do the Spanish class trips and all the, you know, the German trips and things that used to occur, but I know then the teachers would always pay their own ways to go because it was an opportunity for them to travel as well. But I do agree that we are setting a precedent and what's, and how do we, a way this is more important than when the band goes to Florida or when next year a group wants to go and do something equally as important. It's hard to find a balance and how to, although this is a very rare opportunity to meet with the, you know, Nobel laureates, but I would venture to say that next year we'd have a lot of Europe trips after this.
Well, I was leaning in favor of healthy, but then when I realized that they hadn't asked and a lot of, I know my granddaughter goes on trips and we give her money to get some food. And so parents will have to step up and give their children some money to eat. But I think we should just quickly take a vote to see if it's.
They leave next week?
Yes.
I presume they're going to go whether we do this or not, so.
Before we, just to, I don't know if it's feasible to, and I know we put Dr. Catalino in this position earlier as our point person, but to perhaps ask the chaperones and just say, where are we at status-wise? You know, things change day by day in this.
I asked, I asked, actually, maybe Friday, I reached out to Mr. Sullivan, asked if there had been any change in the status. And he said there had not at this point. They had sent out a few more letters of, you know, looking for possible donations, but they had, had no, there's no change in status.
I'd rather encourage them to do something. I don't know, it's pretty, pretty quickly, it's like a GoFundMe or something, you know.
I mean, did you, did you say anything about how they were going to make up the shortfall?
No, I mean, he asked me if I had any ideas on how they could raise money, but he didn't say.
Well, according to that spreadsheet, there was one anonymous donation of $4,500. That came from a single individual?
Yes.
I mean, where would we, where would they be if they didn't have that generosity from that one person?
Any other comments? I think one of the things that really flies out is the fact that we would be setting precedent. And we'd have to be prepared to do this as we go forward. And I'm sure, as someone has already said, there'll be a lot of trips to Europe next year. So.
No, I'm sorry. That's only past the resolution, July 15.
Well, there's a motion on the floor, and we've got a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Yeah.
Motion lost. Okay, I think that brings us to, any board member announcements? Mr. Shaughnessy?
We were informed by Dr. Catalino yesterday morning that a 2015 graduate passed away on, was it Monday evening? We don't know the circumstances. Just have a moment of silence.
The young man's name was?
Shama.
Shama Gafney. Gafney.
Gafney, okay. Can we have a moment of silence for the young man, Gafney? Okay, this brings us to the public participation. Anyone want to address the board again?
So two comments. I apologize for my telephone ringing. But I wanted to comment on that. I walked back into the room when the discussion was going on about several participants in a session on suicide and bullying. And the call that took me out was my, you know, her daughter calling because that was a suicide in her high school that she teaches at on the weekend. And she's very distraught by it. But it just makes me think a lot to encourage our district to be very diligent, vigilant about the bullying that comes up. This is a situation in personal, where there's been a lot of bullying on Facebook and on other social media. So I hope that not only are we vigilant, but perhaps we can begin to think more of ways in our social emotional learning and our curriculum to introduce concepts of responsible social media to our kids and beginning at an early age because it's not something, I know we've done a lot. We've had great disciples, we've had great disciples, but it's just a reminder that we can't stop being vigilant and taking care of each other and taking care of our students. That was one comment. The other was on the resolution. I appreciate Mr. Shaughnessy's concern, but I agree with other board members. And in fact, it is district policy and it was Hoistman's policy that chaperones pay their own way. And I think to make an exception would open up a precedent that could be dangerous for the future. I mean, if we could grant that for one, as noble a cause as that be, then how would we begin to say no or make the distinction between one group versus another? Thank you.
Anyone else?
Can I just?
Yes, Mr. Shaughnessy.
The Parents Association of the High School was sponsoring a anti-bullying conference on November 14th from 9:00 to 12:00 at the high school. The acronym for it is HOPE, Helping Others Protect Everyone. I think it's still scheduled. They weren't able to fill all of the slots that they had hoped to. But the last I heard was that they were still going to hold the event.
There's no need for a second executive session. So we have a motion to adjourn. It's moved. Second, moved to second. All in favor?
Aye.